Well, good morning. My name is Sheena Schmitz. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. And today, I'm going to give you a quick update on the staffing table. Again, as Tom said, a few months ago during the budget process, we had a quick conversation about this and just giving some updates on that today. First, our staffing table is simply the number of budgeted positions for each department. Each year, we look at our staffing table and make sure that we have the appropriate number of positions to be budgeted for the upcoming year. Our policy 4.30 keeps departments in line with the appropriate number of FTEs for our departments. Currently, we have 4,177 unique positions on the staffing table. This means that each of these positions is specific to a job that includes both all full-time, part-time, flat-rate positions, and also held positions, which are not budgeted but still held on the staffing table. As of September 13th, we have 3,317 active employees in our system. Of those active employees, 1,977 are in general fund, 680 are in other taxing funds, for a total of 2,657 in our taxing funds, and 660 in grant funds. We're actively recruiting 310 positions on success We have 837 vacancies within our organization. Of those 837, 211 of them are in grant positions, 626 are in positions within a tax fund, and specifically 491 of those 626 are in the general fund. Following up on our previous discussion with the budget, 241 of those positions have been open for greater than six months. Again, 93 of those 241 positions are in grant positions, 148 are in taxing funds, specifically with 71 of those in the general fund. Just a real quick look of what positions are in grant funds that have been open less than six months. Again, we have 211 of those, and you can read through that list there. You will see that there is a large number in com care. Again, those are grant-funded positions. We've identified what those are: hard-to-fill, high-turnover-type positions. In all tax funds, we have a total of 626 vacancies. The largest portion of these vacancies are specifically with our pole workers at 323 openings. There are also a large number in EMS, which represent EMS volunteer positions. And I would also add that the sheriff's office has a large number on there as well, but as of yesterday, they began a very large class coming through orientation. I believe it was upwards of 30 folks coming through on behalf of the sheriff's office. So the number presented on the screen is accurate as of 9/13, but as we hire people every week, these numbers change and fluctuate. This is a breakdown of positions specifically within the general fund. Again, the largest segment of these openings of the 491 are pole workers at 323 openings. The rest of the taxing funds are listed below at 135. And again, just some numbers to point out: EMS volunteer positions. Highway also has 19 openings, and most of these positions are attributed to seasonal mowing positions. So that's what those are. Now to look at the vacant positions that have been open greater than six months. For grant positions, we have a total of 93. Again, the majority of those are in com care. Those are, majority of them are case manager 2 positions, and other hard-to-fill or high-turnover All tax fund vacancies equal 148 openings. Again, these positions are hard to fill. I point out again EMS and fire. The part-time firefighter and volunteer EMS positions have relatively high numbers there. Here are the general fund positions that have been open for longer than six months. Again, Elections has 12 part-time openings. Corrections has 11 openings with them, with the majority of them being corrections workers. Again, another high-turnover, hard-to-fill type position. And again, I'd just like to mention, we had a very large class come through on Monday, yesterday, for the sheriff's office. So those numbers will be a little bit different. And finally, we're just driving this down. Here are the other taxing funds. Again, those large numbers are in EMS and fire, as those are EMS volunteers and part-time firefighters. So overall, positions that have been open greater than six months are 77. Again, those fluctuate, but a lot of seasonal, a lot of part-time positions, not a lot of full-time positions. We have driven those down, so we have a breakdown of what every position is that I've talked about and listed here. We would be happy to supply those to you if you'd like, but we knew we would talk about positions specifically for hours if we went into a lot of great detail. So with that, does anyone have any questions about our position or staffing table, how we hold those positions open, or what our numbers mean?
All those grant-funded positions like in com care, do we have to send that money back then when we...
Those are really revenue-based positions, and we have them in the event that one of our partners decides that they're not going to deliver a service. So for example, MHA does case management, in addition to com care, doing the case management. If MHA decided, for whatever reason, that they weren't going to be able to do that any longer, we would be able to then fill those positions immediately, provided we could find candidates. That's the interesting. There's no money tied to them. So we, in the budget, they're called grant-funded positions, but in reality, those are almost exclusively revenue-funded positions. And so we fill them when there's a caseload where we can generate the revenue to pay for the position.
Okay. Other questions?
I am curious, on page 12, you talked about EMS volunteer positions. Is that what this 38 is?
Yes. Majority of them are yes.
So I guess the genesis of the question was, what are the funded positions for, funded full-time positions that are unfilled and have been unfilled for a long time? And I'm not sure that's not really answering that question, if these are volunteer positions. I mean, that's not the same thing as a full-funded FTE.
And Lindsay could probably talk about the funding portion of it. It's my understanding that there is money funded for those volunteer-type positions. It's at what level, I'm not specifically sure.
Why are you sitting back there?
Let me call them out.
You can't blame a girl for trying.
Thank you for letting me call you on the spot there. EMS volunteer.
So Commissioner, to answer your, kind of your bigger question about all fully-funded, full-time FTEs, we can get the list from Sheena and do a comparison to get you that information. In terms of EMS volunteers, if I recall correctly, we actually don't have any budget for those folks, and Lorian's going to correct me if I'm fibbing, but we don't, and there's none listed on their personnel sheet.
So the fire shows 21. Is it the same situation there?
So fire, there's the part-time. So if you recall, Commissioner, a few years ago, we created a separate fund center just for those. And so there is funding for those, but they don't typically access it. I don't believe those positions have been filled for some time, but of course, I see Chief Williams here conveniently in my eyeline.
There might be another topic of discussion some other day, but Highway's fund has six. Is that, have those been unfilled for, those are full-time people that haven't been, these haven't been filled for some time?
I could tell you real quick.
Are we actively seeking to fill those six positions, or...just curious?
For highways?
Yeah.
We have, majority of them are your temporary mowers. We have an equipment operator 3 and also a bridge engineer that's open.
See, I think those positions are very, you know, position opened up because someone retired or quit or whatever, or we've added to the staffing table through the budget process. We had discussions. That's really not interesting to me at this, in this subject today. What I am interested in, kind of, is are there full-time positions that have been funded and unfilled for a long time? And if so, why is that? And that's, you know, the state level, there was like 4,000 positions that were unfilled and funded, and the money went to the agency. At the state level, they had some latitude to move the money within the agency. I don't think we can do that here, and I think that's great policy, but it does raise the question, do we have, you know, crisp FTE, you know, staffing tables or not? And if we have funded and unfilled positions for a long period of time, I was kind of genesis of this question. So I don't know that I'm seeing really the answer to the question necessarily in here. I mean, this, the bridge inspector, that's not really what I'm talking about. The mowers are temporary, the pole workers are temporary. The volunteers are basically low-cost or no cost to the county. So it sounds like we have no interest in filling the part-time positions, it sounds like right now, which may be another discussion. But I appreciate the report, but this isn't really, this isn't really answering the basic, the basic question I think I had originally in the budget season.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you, Sheena.
Good morning.
While we're getting transition care, you'll indulge me 30 seconds. I have a brief introduction. Hiding back in the corner is Dr. Eric France. Dr. France is a senior emergency medicine physician who's come to participate in the EMS medical direction elective. So as part of his training, he has 30 days to spend with us learning about how to oversee an EMS system from a physician's standpoint. So if you have a chance to say hello and welcome Dr. France, he'll be with us.
All right. So for this morning, we have the 60-day update for the ICT-1 program. Give you guys a little bit of an understanding of where we are. I'm going to give some introductory statements and reminders on how the program is built, and then I've got Malachi to talk about some of the outcomes and some of our success stories to date. So as you guys remember, the ICT-1 is the targeted triple team of a qualified mental health worker, a law enforcement officer, and a paramedic designed to selectively go after cases that are currently not receiving optimal management through our traditional 911 systems and to bring the right care to the right patient at the right time. This is the vehicle that they're operating out of, which was contributed by Wichita Fire Department, and is full of technology brought forth by the other system partners, representing a truly community systems-based approach to this pilot. Some team dynamics have started to evolve out of this, and with something as complex as this type of program, you're never really sure how the team is going to mesh or how the processes are going to work. We don't have anything to look back on to say, how should this be done? And so even little things like figuring out who's going to drive becomes an issue as we're figuring out, watching calls, and navigating to the right addresses. And what we found is that through a kind of natural evolution, the paramedic seems to be the right driver for us in this one. So they've been set up behind the wheel. The qualified mental health provider has been in the passenger seat and uses the computer stand to access information with the law enforcement officer in the back, monitoring the 911 dispatch center, all of the CAD information coming through. So even while mobile, they've worked out a communications teamwork process for getting themselves to the right calls at the right time. We also found some interesting technology changes. We were originally set up for using an online mobile gateway, and it turns out that the law enforcement-based laptop that operates off of an AirCard was a more usable solution. So as we're looking forward, perhaps the OMG isn't necessarily the best approach, even though that seems to be what works in the rest of the 911 system. So we're learning these little details. And then, of course, our regular street paramedics have all switched over to an iPad system for documentation, and it turns out that might be the right approach for this as well, but we have to work out some of the details with collaborating with the hospital databases that may not be exactly the same as the traditional 911 system. So learning lots of things that weren't necessarily some of the components that we had in the forefront of our mind at the beginning, but nonetheless critical to the mission. How to manage the time has also been an evolution, and while everybody shows up and is excited to hit the streets and be out there serving the people, we actually found that a bit of a strategy period, or getting together and reviewing the cases and going through what's on the docket and the available options for the day, has made us more efficient as well. So they've been doing that. This also gives us an opportunity during normal business hours that if we need to have interaction with the team for doing a training or something like that, that it's a time that we can interface with them and increase their overall efficiencies. We also found that we can do about one to two dedicated calls to the Mobile Crisis Unit program, and that seems to have dealt with, if there isn't anything happening in the 911 system, the team can stay effective by working on those calls that aren't necessarily planned, but have a little more flexibility in the scheduling. For safety reasons, we don't do those after dark. It's not the right thing to do, to show up unannounced and knock on someone's door after dark, but that does give us some flexibility during the early parts of the shift. And they have stepped up to manage some of the law enforcement-based involuntary transports. Initially, the idea was that if we were going to be moving somebody on an involuntary transport, that that's something we would do in a police car, but the dynamics of those cases have shown to not necessarily require that, and they've been able to own that process. Obviously, when there's a safety issue, they don't do so, but that's not the case in many of them, even the involuntary transports. So that's been an interesting evolution as well. So the, where the call originates is being refined. So this is a much shorter list than what you originally saw during the proposal. We are seeing the vast majority of them coming out of the self-dispatch program. So that's the crew actively monitoring the system, seeing which calls look appropriate for the team, and then actively reaching out and taking those calls from the 911 system, freeing up the other units that would have traditionally been responding. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of 85% to 90% of the volume. The remaining 10% to 15% come out of the crisis center, referrals from PD, going back to people that we've already seen before, and then, of course, referrals from the traditional 911 providers. The metrics tracking is quite complex. As you can imagine, with this design of a program, people end up with all sort of end dispositions. They may be going to a hospital, they may be handed off to another service, it may be something that we can manage them in place. So the team has put together a fairly long list of possible outcomes, and we're tracking all of these to figure out where exactly these people are headed after they have their encounter with us. We're also tracking some of the things that we do from an intervention standpoint, including the medical screening exams, as well as trying to do an internal validation of that medical screening exam to make sure that it is safe and accomplishing the requirements of that process. So outcomes is what everybody wants to know, and Malachi has the privilege of talking about where we've been so far, followed by a couple of success stories, and then we'll open it up to questions before talking about next steps. So, Malachi?
Good morning. So after we've, as of yesterday, we have completed 36 shifts. Remember that this, this team is only on Tuesdays through Fridays from 2:00 PM till midnight. So not being every day, going through the 60 days, we've completed 36 shifts. During that time, we've seen 148 patients, which averages out to being a little over four patients per shift. That's been pretty consistent for the last two months. While that number seems a little low for a 10-hour shift, I realize that a lot of these patients will take several hours to really work all the way through the case, and then the documentation that goes along with that. These people are not sitting around doing nothing. They're busy all the time, and they keep busy. And that's been about the consistent workload that we've kind of felt is the sweet spot of where we're getting with this. As far as our dispositions go, I've kind of broken them up into four categories. The red ones over here are essentially non-engagement with the patients. So these are, we were canceled prior to arrival, got on scene, there was nobody there on scene that we could find, or the client just did not want to engage with us at all. And so these are about a quarter of the calls, and we kind of toss that out of what we're actually looking at as far as how we're treating our patients. So we can kind of ignore the red ones, and look at the yellow, which is handoff to other agencies, green, which is treat in place, which you'll see is our largest area, and specifically of that, treat in place with verbal support is our largest disposition, where we're able to leave people on scene and give them the support that they need verbally. And then the blues are our actual transports. The majority of those are to the hospital, and that's kind of split between involuntary and voluntary. Another way to look at this, is taking those, taking those dispositions and putting them on the pie graph, you'll see that the treat in place is about half of, half of our calls. And of the transports that we have, the majority of those are going to the hospital, a split between voluntary and involuntary.
Was that handoff to the other agencies, like before?
Yes. That'd be the yellows right over here, handoff to EMS or handoff to law enforcement. So a handoff to EMS would be when we find out that this is actually a medical patient, and there's a medical need that needs to be addressed. ICT-1, while they have a paramedic onboard, does not provide dependent treatment, and we're not an ambulance. If they need medical help, then we'll call an ambulance in and hand them off to EMS. Same thing with handoff to law enforcement. Sometimes this is not a mental health issue, but it is an actual crime issue, and handing off appropriately to law enforcement is what that category is. Dr. Gallagher was mentioning that transporting patients involuntarily to the hospital, as far as us owning the process. Oftentimes, those patients are transported in the back of a police car, which is particularly if they're involuntary, but our team follows them to the hospital and will immediately release the officer to get back on the street. They'll do the, the officer on the ICT team will do the case report, and at the same time that the social worker is giving report and doing her paperwork, they kind of take ownership of that. And so essentially, the only thing that the police, the police car is providing is just that ride for five minutes. Then we can get them back on the street doing, doing their job, responding to other calls. As far as resources freed up, in our 36 shifts, we freed up 100 law enforcement units, 67 fire apparatus, and 66 ambulances, for a total of 233 911 resources that we freed up. Also, although it's not a 911 resources, not, it's not a 911 resource, we have prevented 80 trips to the crisis unit at com care. So we're making an impact on the system. It's helping out.
So before you go to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a way to translate this into dollars?
There is. I have not done that, but it could be, yeah. Really, what it would have to boil down to is we'd have to get numbers from individual agencies of what does a response cost? How much, how much money does it cost to send a fire truck to a medical call? How much money does it cost to send an ambulance to a medical call? And along with the ambulance, there's the question of whether or not it was transported to the hospital, and if they used equipment. So there's going to be variability.
Yeah.
But having to know exactly how much does it cost to send one officer to one call is, you know, a number we'd have to get from the police department.
I think that would help build your case to fund this program indefinitely, if we're able to save money. So that, that would be really interesting to me. And then, can you go back one more slide?
Sure.
I might, I might interject briefly that I believe right now, com care crisis is in the midst of another cost avoidance study, is that correct? And so those numbers exist through previous cost avoidance studies that com care has done for the crisis center. As we gather enough data here, we could also work with WSB or somebody to, again, do a cost avoidance on this particular project and see what those dollar amounts are.
I'd love to see that.
Yep.
Another thing I would stick in is, it's a hard thing from an operations standpoint to put a specific cost per run. Obviously, we can do the simple division, but it's a cost of readiness design. So while I may not be able, I may be able to decrease a couple calls over the period of a shift, but that's not going to take a service out and not have to pay for it. So like, looking at the crisis unit, if we were to have three less people go during that shift, we're not going to close because of that. So the cost of staying open and operating, it will remain the same, but what changes is the readiness. So if we, if the cost has remained fixed, but the readiness increases, from a thing like 911 services having an increased level of readiness pays off, but it's not in dollars. So we can break it down and look at the individual run cost, but it's hard to then put that into the real world unless you've reduced so much that you are going to take someone off shift or shut down an ambulance or need one less fire station, which is far less likely. So it's more of a focus on availability of readiness than individual cost of the call.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm just saying, like, when you're talking to us, I mean, it really boils down to dollars and cents.
Yep.
I mean, at the end of the day.
And we can, we can figure it out on a per-call. It's just then hard to translate it into the next step.
I mean, don't take my words out of context. It is about patient care. It is about all of that. But, I mean, if we want to be, if we want to fund this, I think that it's important to show how much we are saving and how much we are, and maybe not saving for chance. Maybe we are utilizing those resources to help more people.
Correct. And that, I think, is the real argument for the, you know, patient care. It may be similar cost as to with or without the program, but we can do so much more with those dollars.
And then, just in the future, like, I don't know what all these acronyms are, you know?
Okay. So I'm sorry.
And you don't have to explain them to us now, but like, maybe in the future, if you go back, could you like, maybe, you know?
So actually, really easy, really simple. This is a 10-second explanation. When we go back to this list, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, all the way up through Q.
Okay.
And these are the codes that are in CAD. So when they finish a call, they, in CAD at dispatch, when they close the call out, they assign one of these outcomes.
Letters, okay.
And the code just, that's how it's classified in the, in the computer system.
Oh, crap.
So ICT-A, and this is what it means.
Well, earlier you had OMG, and we were like...
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
You know?
Yeah.
Pete brought that up. He was too scared to ask. So he put it on me over here, like...
Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Hey, the, the four, four patients, or four treatments per shift?
Mm-hmm.
So I know, Malachi, we've been measuring with Colorado Springs and Tulsa. Is there a, is there, is that too much apples, oranges? Do you know what their numbers are?
So, yeah, we do know what their numbers are. And interestingly enough, we had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to spend a couple of days with both Colorado Springs and Tulsa, and with their medical directors, and sit down and really dive into the weeds and comparing stuff with each other, and really got, I personally got a much better sense of how the different systems are working. Colorado Springs obviously is much more robust, and we can talk about the differences between them, but as far as workload goes, this is pretty similar. Pretty similar. Colorado Springs is able to handle more patients per shift, but they also have more units. Oftentimes, they'll have more than one ICT unit on the street at the same time. So...
And remind me, where, what triggers the call? Where do you get that from? 911, com care?
Yeah. So basically, what, the majority of the calls, the police officer has his laptop open up, and he is watching the dispatch board, watching everything that's happening on the police side, watching everything that's happening on EMS. So...
And remind me, what triggers the call? Where do you get that from? 911, Calm Care?
Yeah, so basically, what the majority of the calls, the police officer has his laptop open up, and he is watching the dispatch board, watching everything that's happening on the police side, watching everything that's happening on EMS and fire, and just kind of keeping an eye on things. And when the call comes out, they're watching the text of the call and like, ah, that one looks like something that we can jump on. And actually, this is a great segue into like, one of our success stories, is a call was coming out for a disturbance. You know, and reading the call text of this disturbance as it was being dispatched, it was a PD-only call. And it was for somebody that was tied up in the backyard screaming. But then there was also some weird context of the calling party said she felt like she needed to push. You know, that sounds, to me, from a medical perspective, and that sounds like a pregnant person, but that doesn't match up with what the original call text was. So when we got out there, what we did find was that this was a pregnant individual who'd been on a four-day meth binge. And so she had been calling 911 repeatedly from different phones, and it was for paranoid delusions. She thought that she was hearing somebody calling for help in her backyard that wasn't really there. And as far as the disturbance portion of it, there's nobody there to help from the police department standpoint. That would have been, they were actually ready to close the case out. Nothing for us to do here. But I was able to, or at least the medical side of this was able to get in and intervene from the medical standpoint. And we eventually ended up doing a consult with an obstetrician at Wesley and ended up giving her some medication to calm her down and became a little bit more rational and sane, and then get her appropriately transported to the hospital. Now, this is one of the ones where we had to hand off the EMS, but we were able to give medication to get her back into safe vital sign limits and, you know, where she could have a better chance of, or have a better mind frame for making decisions than where she was at. I consider that one to win, but, you know, it all boiled down to reading all the calls as they're coming out and having that person dedicated watching the screen. And, you know, the dynamic that I've seen is when something pops up on the screen that the PD officer says, hey, guys, what do you think about this? Here's the call text, and they discuss it as a team. And if it sounds like something they want to go on, they'll jump on it. Some of them are very easy suicidal calls. We usually just automatically jump on those if we're available. But some of them are a lot more subtle and complex, like this one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's an example of a self-dispatch call.
So, other success stories. We've had several successful interventions on attempted suicides. There was one where the team came out and, you know, after interrogation of a guy who was originally saying that there wasn't any really, any real problems, they were able to coax out of him that he mentioned something about gas in his apartment. And the police officer went in to investigate, and he had actually clamped open his gas line and was actively filling his house up with gas, was potentially going to blow the house up. Obviously, that was an involuntary hold at that point, and we were able to get him to the appropriate help. But there have been several cases where we were able to acutely intervene on that short timeframe when it really mattered. Another individual had made plans to jump off of a bridge, had actually spent all of his money and gave away his pets and was at that point ready to go. And he decided to make one last attempt at getting help by calling the mobile crisis unit. The mobile crisis unit had an index of suspicion that was high enough that they thought that this couldn't wait for them to get out to it. So they sent that call over to us, and we were able to get out there and make contact with them and, you know, get him to the help that he needed without him actually following through with his plan. Been a lot of good stories. There's been some complex things that have happened where it really took the full team dynamic and that teamwork of all the different perspectives to get together. One that comes to mind was, there was a homeless woman who had severe burns on her legs that were infected. She'd actually been washing them out with storm drain water. And she was taking the approach of, I don't want to talk to anybody. I know what my rights are. You can't talk to me, and refusing help, even though she was generating several 911 calls a day as people drove by and saw, obviously, this very seriously wounded woman sitting on the side of the road. With our team spending about forty-five minutes talking to her and really going into depth with her, it became apparent that her mental health history, she believed that the injuries that she had on her legs, the burns, were actually part of her normal, everyday psychosis. She didn't believe that those wounds were actually real. And at which point, if you're not able to understand your situation that you're in, you don't really have the decisional capacity to make a decision for yourself. And she turned into an involuntary hold. And that was done with close communication with Dr. Gallagher and consultation and a very slow, deliberate assessment from the entire team, from the mental health side, from the medical side, and with the authority of law enforcement. So that was another success story.
So Malachi is the program manager for this. If anyone has any questions or if the public has questions, they can reach out to him directly to get those answered. There's no ask today for this. This is an update, and we currently have commitment from the services to provide this through the end of the ninety-day pilot. We've also had some conversations with the participants about extending it out through the end of the calendar year. Beyond that, though, it's an unfunded issue. So my understanding is that there have been some contingency funds set aside if we want to continue this beyond the first. And assuming that that's something that you guys are interested in, we would be able to put together cost analytics and bring that to you as well. But that's where we stand today. Take any questions? Mr. Howell?
So one of the things I was curious about in the beginning of this program was the logistics of this, you know, the intergovernmental agreements between the Fire District Wichita and Sedgwick County. And I don't know if you can speak to that or not. I mean, could we have any breakdown on exactly, you know, which of those three jurisdictions provided, you know, how many hours of support, how many shifts, or that type of thing? And also, any idea, I want to obviously get into HIPAA, but it'd be nice to know, basically, what was the general response areas? If you could talk about, you know, where all of these in Wichita? Were there some in other parts of the county? I'd just like to know if there's any way to talk about geographic responses.
Sure. Well, so the first one, the agreements between the city, we were able to get a written MOU through all the jurisdictions approved by legal, all of the processes. So that worked out very well. The staffing was split up in an equitable way, and then the physical property, the vehicle and the technology was also divided up according to the stakeholders. Well, we have this, and we can bring it to the table, and we have that and can bring it to the table. It was more collaborative than negotiation, but...
No, as far as the response area, one of the things that, as program manager, I've stressed greatly onto the team. And we've seen, we've seen the results is that this is a county-wide initiative and that you, while the majority of these calls do come out in Wichita, we do strive to go to the outlined communities and provide services to the county. And we've responded to Derby before, and we've responded to Cheney several times. We've had some really good success stories, particularly in those communities where they don't have very many services available. I mean, the mental health care that is available when you pick up the phone and call for help in Cheney, it's pretty low compared to what it is in Wichita. And so we believe that this unit provides that safety net for those outlined communities, and we are actively striving to prioritize calls from those communities if they come out, that we know that they need the help more than what the city of Wichita does. And so we try to get that out there whenever we can, whenever it's available.
It might be a thing to report on, maybe at the end of the ninety days, is talk about it a little bit more, maybe show, you know, maybe a little more information about how the responses were.
Sure. We can put together a heat map if you'd like.
That might be good. And then the last thing I'd just say is, I assume that on your response numbers, you're talking about, you know, sixty-six ambulance calls we're avoiding, that type of thing. I assume that that's based on the response of ICT-1, not so much a reduction in, I think there's two ways to look at that. In other words, you might look at and say, we typically have, you know, X number of calls per month. Historically, we've seen kind of a trend line of what, you know, sheriff's officer calls look like or WPD calls look like or Fire District calls look like or whatever. And we've seen some kind of a little verb on their data that you could look at it that way, or you could say, based on ICT-1 response, we calculated this, you know, we took this many calls, and therefore, these other agencies didn't have to do that. I assume the latter is how you calculated that. But it might be interesting to look at the other way to look at that and say, what has happened to the call volume of WPD, WFD, Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, and, of course, EMS, to see how their responses, do they show any change in their data? It might be nice to have that data as well. This is more of a comment, I guess. But thank you for your presentation.
Any other comments, questions?
All right, thank you all.
The commissioners will go over the agenda for October ninth very quickly here. It's a relatively light agenda. There is a commission meeting and a Fire District meeting scheduled for the day. Have a couple of appointments to make with the individual commissioners, one in District One, one in District Two. In the new business, Item D is a code pertaining to animals. And I think Tim has told me that Adrienne is going to walk the halls with you. I think she has something scheduled today to talk with you about that particular item. Item E is we're bringing the policy back for advisory board appointments, at-large advisory board appointments. And Justin's here today, too, if you have any questions on that. GO bond sales, Lindsay will go over, and then our usual Board of Bids and Contracts.
So for the four bridge projects and the adult detention facility, so earlier this year, Commissioners approved a resolution to afford with that, where this approves us working with our municipal advisor and our bond council to prepare the documents for sale for later in October, early December.
The consent agenda is mostly, the first three items are public works. Then there's a couple of aging, and then the back is routine county business types of issues.
What's this additional vacation rate?
Item N. Sheena?
Is everyone going to bill with you?
I'm sorry.
On the item N here. It's what?
Mike Pippin's vacation request.
Oh, yeah, it's his contract.
Oh, it's his contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a comment, Item C has a typo. Should be Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment, not Commissioner Howell.
That is true.
Very good, sir.
Hey, Mal, we made that correction.
That's fine. Anything else on general? And then on fire agenda, there was a reclassification of the fiscal associate position in Fire. Chief Williams is here, if you have questions for him.
Any questions on the agenda? Anything else come forth today?
Yeah, Kate, you want to talk about and show them the document?
Behind all of the agendas, you have a handout that looks like this. It is an Outlook calendar. We've created it. All of the events are included on the calendar, are things that commissioners, all commissioners are invited to, regular advisory board meetings, anything happening at TCAM, Extension Center, Exploration Place, Sedgwick County Zoo, and the Wichita-Sedgwick County Historical Museum. So you'll see, we've got kind of a week snapshot here. There was the Riverfront Legacy Coalition meeting on Monday. We have got two Riverfront Legacy meetings, one with Commissioner Meitzner tonight in Bel Air, and then the other one is with Commissioner Howell on Thursday at the Public Schools Administration Building on Edgemore. We also have commissioners attending the Economic Outlook Conference Thursday morning. And then there are two events on Friday, the Spirit Aerosystems Research Collaboration Center grand opening, and then the event to honor Dr. Bardot at his new, Dr. Bardot's building on the Innovation Campus. And then Saturday, we have two events, two fundraisers, one for the Mental Health Society, which is Beautiful Minds Gala, and then TCAM has their annual Trail Blazers Gala at the Hyatt. So that's kind of what's going on for this week. You'll have next week on the back, just for reference. We can go over that next week as well. Commissioner Dennis, we do have your advisory board on for Monday, the seventh. However, I'm looking into Outlook to see why that didn't print, but it is listed on the schedule. So that's kind of what we've created here. So if anything, all commissioners have been invited to, cultural events, advisory board meetings, anything relevant that we feel should be noted, we can include this as well.
So the other thing that I would like to request to be put on there are things that happen in our building. We missed a huge event last week with a new judge being sworn in. And even though it is a state-of-Kansas thing, it's something that we all should have been invited to so that we could attend because it affects the citizens. Plus, it was kind of historic. So I'm kind of sad that we didn't get an invitation to that. I'm kind of sad that we didn't attend that. And I think that that needs to be something that we put on our counter.
We can work with District Court.
So the building at large?
Yeah.
So everything that's happening in our building?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions, Kate? Nothing else you have?
That was it, sir.
Very good. Any commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up this morning? Any staff around the table? And we got staff all behind me and stuff now, so it's hard to tell. Anything they need to bring up? Any of the electors? Oh, Tabitha?
Just want to remind everybody that we do have the general election in thirty-five days. We, as always, still need election workers, not three hundred and twenty-three. We don't hire all of those positions for this election cycle. I did want to mention that last week was National Voter Registration Day, and we did see a significant uptick in the number of registrations we received so far. We're still backlogged about two thousand registrations. Trying to catch up on that because we are down two staff in that department currently. But we will obviously get those done. It's fine, we'll get it caught up. I did just want to mention something that kind of came out in the news yesterday from another county that's doing a service that I've received quite a bit of questions about, that you may receive questions, and just give you information so you have it in case you receive questions from your constituents. The Douglas County Clerks announced that they will start paying the return postage in all their ballots that go out by mail, so people don't have to put a stamp on that. We do have an agreement worked out with the post office that if someone fails to put postage on their ballot, it will be delivered to us, and we will cover that cost. We do not advertise that because if everyone next year were to do that, that would be an expense between forty to sixty thousand dollars for Sedgwick County in return postage on our ballots. So I just wanted you to have that information. I've already had people ask me, is this something we can do? And my answer has been, it's a lot of money for Sedgwick County to do that in an even more dire election. So I have not requested that money from you. That decision has not been brought up to you, but I just wanted you to have those dollar figures in case somebody in your districts asks you those questions. You know what it would cost us to do that. So that's what I have.
Very good.[1790.71]